The City and Marine City Commission Meeting has called the order on Thursday, December 19th, at 7:03 PM. We have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. You know, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bryson.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Rourke.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mayor Van den Bosch.
Here.
City Manager Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Davis.
Here.
All right, and for approval of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto five presentations, proclamations, and recognitions, we have 5A, the Road Diet Engineering Presentation from FNV.
Do you want to help? I don't think so. Is that because of the microphone?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. So, thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Julie Kroll. I'm with Police of Manon Ring, and I'm here to talk to you guys about road diets. Just a little intro about myself. I am our Traffic Engineering Group Manager and manage all of our traffic for all of our offices. We have nine offices in Michigan and Indiana. I'm based out of our Farmington Hills office, and I've been with FNV since 2015, and I have just about 25 years' experience. I graduated from college in 2000, so makes the math a little bit easy, but in February of 2000, I'm licensed in six states right now, working on Illinois. And one question I get asked a lot is, what is the PTOE? PE is Professional Engineer. PTOE is Professional Traffic Operations Engineer. It's an additional certification, eight-hour exam that we take as traffic engineers to be certified to do this job. And I'm also on the ITE Michigan Section Board of Directors. ITE is Institute of Transportation Engineers. This is a professional organization that we use a lot in our line of work, so I'm on our Michigan Section Board right now. So, we're going to talk this evening, this is kind of the overall agenda. I'm going to talk about what is a road diet, where can they be implemented, what are the pros and cons of road diets, frequently asked questions about road diets, and examples of communities that I have personally worked with here in southeast Michigan that have done road diets. So, we'll just start straight up from the beginning. What is a road diet? So, road diets are basically any type of reduction in road width. So, it can be a four-to-three lane conversion, that's the most common, but you can also do, in the bottom left there, that is a five-lane road diet. I just finished one of those in Jonesville, where they had a five-lane road and they wanted to utilize the space in their downtown to do parking and bike lanes. So, that's what we did there. The one in the middle, that's where they wanted to do a reallocation of the shoulders to put in a center-left turn lane. And then, the one on the right is really just narrowing the lanes, so just making the lanes narrower, narrower lanes generally lead to lower speeds, so that's where you would do that one. So, road diet is basically making any change to the roadway to the road width. So, how do we select road diets? There's four main ways that you would select roads to do a road diet. They could be part of a community safety plan. So, one of the main reasons people do road diets is because of the safety aspects of them, might also do them. This one right here is, the picture that you see is the Genesee County Municipal Planning Organization created a screening program for all of their four-lane undivided roadways, and created a rating system to determine where they could or could not implement them based on different criteria. So, that is what they did here, and so you can see like where they recommend, some were recommended, some were not recommended, and they went through this process through like every single roadway in their system. Another way to select road diets is through multimodal. So, if you have a multimodal plan and you've identified that these are key areas where we want to implement multimodal, those roadways could be part of a road diet. And then, what MDOT does a lot is screens upcoming resurfacing projects and says, okay, we have an upcoming resurfacing project, what can we do here? Can we do a road diet here? Is that something the community supports? So, the MDOT does that a lot, and when they do their, that was actually the Jonesville project, is they were doing a resurfacing project and this community wanted a road diet, so that was part of that. So, it's a really easy way, because they're going to be scooping out the road anyways, so tell us what you want to put back. So, some of the pros of road diets, safety is the primary reason. We can see reduction in crashes between 19 and 47 percent, depending upon what the existing crash pattern is. We see reduction in speeds when we put in road diets, and speed differential. So, a lot of times with a four-lane road, you have speeds, vehicles traveling at different rates of speed, and so that speed differential can increase the crash potential on roadways. So, when you have one lane, everybody's basically traveling at that same rate of speed. Reduces the crash potential for pedestrians. You have less lanes and conflict points for pedestrians as they're crossing the roadway. It also gives the opportunity to install pedestrian refuge islands in some cases. And then simplifying gap selection. So, as motorists are coming outside streets, they're able to then, they're only looking for cars in one direction, one each direction, rather than four lanes of traffic, it's only two lanes of traffic. Some of the cons of doing road diets in locations where you actually pull the curbs in, if you have delivery vehicles, or what I run into a lot is garbage trucks, and the garbage truck is literally blocking the lane and you cannot get around. You can cause some congestion with that when you bring those curbs in. If the road is not designed to accommodate a three-lane section, you may divert some traffic to parallel routes that, or side streets that are not typically accustomed to seeing that traffic. Drivers may say, well, this is too backed up, I'm going to go on the alternate routes. By reducing from a four-lane to a three-lane, you do reduce the through capacity of the roadway. The roadway with four lanes was designed to accommodate more traffic than a three-lane roadway, just by the passenger cars per hour per lane. And then, in areas where you have high driveway density and a combine, combination with high left turn volumes, so if you have high volumes of left turns turning in out of driveways, it may not work in a road diet situation where everybody's trying to get into that center-left turn lane space all at the same time. Ultimately, proper design and consideration of traffic patterns is crucial to ensure that a road diet is effective. So, a lot of times what we do is we get called in for communities like, hey, we're considering a road diet, we want to analyze the operations to make sure that this is the right fit for our community. So, we do that a lot, whether it's small traffic volumes, large traffic volumes, just to give a little bit extra insurance that like what we're doing makes sense for our community. And so, at the end, I'll show you some examples of like where we did that. Frequently asked questions, so how does a road diet, let's see, there we go, how does a road diet impact businesses? A lot of times what we see with the road diets is it creates slower traffic and allows people to, instead of they're driving through a community, they're driving to a community, because you can take those outside travel lanes and replace them with other things. So, we've done road diets where they replaced, they didn't put in bike lanes, they just basically made a striped-out shoulder, and the feedback that we got from the community was that they felt more comfortable walking, because the traffic wasn't as close to them as it was. So, even with the shoulder, even if it wasn't a bike lane, it created that extra gap space, so they didn't feel like they were literally walking right next to traffic. Motorists are more likely to park and walk if the community feels safe for them. What we found with the research was that a lot of the fears were not realized. I didn't pull up, I didn't pull up the research project I was reading, but they did a whole study of communities where, before and after, and that there was a fear that bringing in a road diet would cause people to divert from downtown areas, and really that didn't happen. It was, you know, gave the opportunity to create more viable areas in the downtown. Do road diets lead to slower emergency response times? No, especially in what we're talking about in this case, we're not changing the actual width of the road, it's going to stay, the curbs are not moving. So, in reality, vehicles are, when they see that emergency vehicle, they're probably going to get a paralysis, some will move over the sides, some will stop in their lane, but we're really not changing the width of the roadway. When we bring those curbs in is when that might be more concerning, but in this case, we're talking about keeping the actual road width and just striping out, it's just pavement markings and not actual curbs. So, do road diets make traffic worse? And I don't have a good answer for this, because it really depends, and it really depends on how the traffic is operating on the roadway. So, road diets work some places and not others, and that's why we always want to make sure that it's being placed in the right location and doing the proper analysis to make sure that it's done properly. Otherwise, if we try to force something that's not the right fit, then it may not work. MDOT has guidelines for traffic volumes for where they consider where road diets should be implemented and not implemented. So, MDOT's threshold, or anything less than 15,000 vehicles a day, is a good candidate. They do not require an operational analysis, they do require a safety study, and, but they are not going to require any sort of operational analysis. Between 15,000 and 20,000, they will require a traffic operational analysis. I've done road diets on, in communities that have 15,000 to 20,000 vehicles a day, and they work great. We've looked at them, sometimes they don't work great. So, it's on a case-by-case basis. And then, anything over 20,000 a day can get a little iffy. The ones that I've looked at, usually in those cases, more than 20,000 vehicles a day, usually we're recommending, instead of a road diet, usually recommending a five-lane section, like they really do need more capacity, but it is on a case-by-case basis. So, are there more driveway and side street delays? We get this a lot where people say, you're going to put this in, I'm never going to get out. I've been in meetings, people say, I sat at this intersection for 20 minutes, and I'm like, you didn't sit anywhere for 20 minutes. So, what we see is that, and I was mentioning it before, that you can see in the conflict points, that when you're coming out of those side streets, right now, you have to look for two cars going one way, two cars going the other way, so four lanes of traffic you're trying to navigate. When you have a three-lane section, you have much less conflict points and potential for the, I'm not sure why that screen keeps going in and out. So, much less conflict points when you have a three-lane section to a four-lane section. So, I was going to talk through, I've got three example projects that I worked on. This one is in Birmingham. This is a section, it's mostly residential, about one and a half, two miles long section through the city, major thoroughfare, 15,000 to 20,000 vehicles a day, so it was one of those that we had to study. Lot of, like, lot of residential driveways all the way along the corridor, signalized intersections along the corridor, a lot of pedestrian traffic. We did do a before and after study, because they did a trial to say, like, let's just try it, see what happens, and then we did a bunch of data before it, and then we did done some data during, after the trial, and then, as part of that, we determined, we saw a reduction in crashes of 38 percent, which was great. We saw improved side street operations, so we did this delay evaluation, we did the operational analysis I was talking about, and evaluated like the before and after at those intersections, saw improvement at the side streets. We were able to increase the pedestrian safety by adding pedestrian refuge islands at several locations, and added pedestrian crossing treatments as part of this. Ultimately, they did, it was, they basically ground off the pavement markings for the trial, and then we did the before and after study, and then once they approved it, they did the mill and fill and basically scooped out the road and put new pavement down, and then just repainted it. This one is actually a lot similar to what you guys have here. This one is Fetten Road in Flint. This was a MDOT local agency project, a much more commercial corridor, a lot of driveways, and design your volumes on this one were less than 15,000 vehicles a day, so MDOT didn't require an operational analysis, but they did require the crash analysis and the safety review. And as part of that, we do a predictive analysis to determine if we do the road diet, what are the predictive crashes associated with the reduction in lanes? And so, the study showed that it was a good candidate for a road diet, and would reduce the number of crashes and the crash severity associated with this road corridor. So, this is, these are some pictures of what it looked like after the implementation of the road diet. And then, the last one I wanted to talk about, this one was in Grand Blanc. This one was like more similar to the Birmingham one, where there was a lot of concern from the public that this wasn't going to work. It was part of a trail project that they were putting in for the Iron Bell Trail, and it was a local agency project. We did the operational analysis, we did the crash analysis and the safety review. Ultimately, the results showed that the operations were not going to be impacted by the road diet, and so you can kind of see like in the middle picture there, that's the before, and then the below picture is the after, where they implemented the road diet. So, it's same thing, they didn't pull the curbs in, they basically just redid the mill and then resurfacing and repainting along the corridor. So, that is all I had for you guys this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions or go back and talk about any of the other items that I just mentioned.
If I may, Julie, thank you for your presentation and bringing your expertise to the topic. It's pretty helpful having the data and the previous studies you've done. Have you, by chance, been through Marine City South Park or stretch here before tonight?
I had not been out to Marine City before this evening.
So, we had a comment earlier today that's making me think about this a little differently. There are right turn lanes, right turns off onto the various driveways and stops that we have. The gentleman mentioned that they're too steep for quick turns, that it stops traffic, and if we do this, it'll completely stop traffic for right turns. I did a lot of research on this, I'm not a road attician, it's not my area of expertise. Can you address that or speak to that at all? I mean, is, when you're saying it's kind of case-by-case basis, how much are you factoring in the type of turnoffs, the type of driveways? Does this affect it very much? Is this a consideration for us?
For the right turns at driveways?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what we, you would probably want to do, and I would expect as part of this, MDOT would look at it, but we normally look at, for all of these, look at crashes. So, I'd be curious to see what kind of existing crash pattern you have related to that right turning movement, because if you're seeing a lot of people like way slowing down, then you end up with a lot of crashes associated with that. If we're seeing a lot of crashes associated with right turns at driveways, then my question is, okay, like, why? Why do we have so many right turn crashes at these driveways? And what mitigation measures should we be looking at to mitigate that? So, maybe we should be looking at, you know, if this driveway sees so many right turns, they probably need a right turn lane, so that they get out of the through traffic. Honestly, with a road diet, that gives you that opportunity to put in the right turn lanes, where you currently do not have right turn lanes, because you'll be, you still have the road width, it's still there. You can just restripe key locations where you're seeing a lot of these right turning crashes, and create those right turn lanes to get those cars out of the through lanes, and that'll eliminate that crashes or the potential for those backups that you're referring to.
Thank you very much.
Are you aware of the ADT of this stretch of road in question?
I am, yes, yes. It is below the 15,000.
Yeah. My understanding is below 5,600, actually, so even a third of that criteria. Are you aware of any road diets in Michigan that have been implemented and then reversed?
I know that some road diets have not been as successful as others, and I have not, fortunately, been part of any of those projects, but I know of one in Traverse City, 8th Street, had a lot of issues. That's the one I could think of offhand. And we've done projects, we looked at one in Birmingham on another section of Maple Road to do a road diet, and the volumes were just so high that when we evaluated it, we're like, no, this isn't going to work. It's not going to be a good fit for this area, so, and it is what it is. It's a four-lane section, and it's very congested, but we didn't want to cause other problems by forcing something that wasn't going to work.
In the Traverse City instance, do you know what the ADT was, or was it another circumstance that caused the issue?
That's a good question. Like I said, I wasn't a part of that study, but I'm sure if you Googled like 8th Street for Traverse City, you would find a whole big webpage about it.
And final question, do you know the relative frequency that MDOT resurfaces roads?
It's not very frequent. So, if you're up for resurfacing, you're probably not going to be up for resurfacing again for at least 10, 15 years.
Okay. So, with this, having some streets in Michigan road diets be reverted, and I'm putting you on the spot, Julie, I'm sorry, but do you know how many, like the ratio or percentage of these that aren't successful in Michigan?
It's, as far as I know, it's a very low, low percentage. Because the reason why is because we want to make sure that we're doing it in the right spots. So, that's why I said, I've been involved in, I was, I only pulled three of these, I found like 10 road diets that I've personally been involved in, where we've evaluated it. I had looked at one that St. Clair Shores had wanted to do on Jefferson Ave, and we looked at that, and I was like, no. I was like, so, so, I'm not, I'm much more conservative when it comes to making recommendations, because I understand it's so expensive, and we don't want communities spending a lot of money on something and then having to have to revert it. So, like, they really wanted it in St. Clair Shores, it's like, you really do want to do this, you're going to cause all kinds of traffic backups on Jefferson by implementing a road diet. So, that one didn't happen. So, that's just me, I'm much, there's other engineers that are maybe not, they're more risky, I'm a little risk averse when it comes to recommending something that I'm afraid that might have to get reversed.
Thanks. I have one more question, then it all, I promise I'll stop. And Mr. Reeves, I might need your help with this one. We have to have a decision on this in early January.
Sure.
To MDOT, which is not leaving us a lot of leeway for studies and results to be able to get in. What is a timeframe for a type of study that would be applicable in our location that you would recommend doing before implementation of a road diet?
I think it really kind of depends on what your main concerns are. So, for example, this is a Grand Blanc one. We originally had started with this as a safety evaluation and the crash analysis. That's something that, like, my team could complete in about two to three weeks. Then, we presented to them, we were like, this is a good candidate, and they were very concerned about some select intersections not being able to operate properly. So, we ended up modeling the entire corridor at those select intersections to say, okay, before and after, how does this look from an operation standpoint, so that they could feel more comfortable making that decision? And that takes a little more time, because I have to collect traffic count data, I have to set up a traffic model. So, you know, a simple study, reviewing the crash data, that can take maybe three weeks. The full analysis to evaluate the corridor, that can take longer, can take four to six weeks, depending upon when you get the data collection and then setting up the models.
If I can offer you just a little bit of information, and if I have wrong information, correct me, there is no traffic study planned, as Commissioner indicated, I thought the ADT was under 5,000, but the numbers may have changed since when I looked. Traffic accident crashes, as supplied by the Chief of Police, were 30 within the last five years. Now, I did not do an analysis on the hazardous action codes to determine cross-traffic, rear-end traffic, or anything of those natures, but based, he's been here 25 years, I'm sure he gives a synopsis of the main characteristic of the majority of those accidents, minimal pedestrian accidents, so there is an issue with crosswalks that I talked to you about previously, and not meeting the warrant requirements under MDOT for like a hawk crossing or some, so there's a consideration of that, there's a school, and a cross, heavy cross-traffic in terms of future pedestrian use and things of that nature. Without that study by MDOT, they don't seem to have any concern due to the ADD on needs of a study, and I want to make sure that I did cover additional questions that was opposed to me. Is there an acceptable limit for a road diet minimum? I mean, is there, is there, there's a maximum, there's 20,000, I've heard somewhere in between there, but there, I mean, the construction of roads now, the capacity of roads to handle the traffic volume, you know, if the community grows, like, we're planning some different housing developments and things like that, it would have to significantly grow in order to alter the concern for a road diet, is that correct?
Yes, it would have to grow significantly. Normally, I would say, a three-lane roadway can handle like 1,700 to 1,900 passenger cars per hour per lane, per hour per lane. So, right now, you're like, that's like twice, like, your whole day, just about.
Okay, in the standard lane in Michigan, based on MDOT requirements, center turn lane and travel lanes, they're proposing five-foot buffer lanes, 11-foot travel lanes, and a 12-foot center turn lane. Does that fall within the parameters that you usually see?
That's pretty standard. MDOT goes with those 11-foot travel lanes, 12-foot turn lanes, and then the five-foot shoulder.
And the mix of traffic concerns, we're not, although we do have some bus traffic, we do have, get some heavy commercial use because of facilities in the area that we prefer they don't, but it is a straight state trunk line, 11-foot lanes and 12-foot center turn lane, no issues?
No. Don't normally see, most roads that are not freeway, they're doing 11-foot lanes now.
I think that's the majority of the questions that I either have or sent to me here shortly, though I want to make sure.
I mean, you'd actually asked us, you know, what was the city's vision, I mean, at least from the people that I've talked to, a more walkable, accessible area in, you know, place in that area is what was, you know, what was a concern to them, and they had seen examples in, to a lesser degree, Algenack, only because it was just implemented, and to a greater degree in St. Clair, where that roadway has been demonstrated, at least by the observer, to be, you know, very easily crossed, easily walkable. We have a school that's across this road from us, you know, the bulk of the population is on one side of the road, but the school's on the opposite side of the road. We have parks and other things that are somewhat underutilized in that area, and, you know, that was at least the expressed concern that the people that I talked to, you know, wanted to see remedied. wanted to see remedied by this. The other thing that I would comment on is that we've long in the city, sort of been, has been referred to as two sides, you know, the east side and the west side, were divided by a river which goes up the center of the city. And, you know, the, the west side of town is always somewhat felt neglected and I would argue rightfully so. So the thought from, again, the constituents that I talked to was that, you know, this could be the start of aiding that in terms of investment, people wanting to move to the area, et cetera. So I might be alone in that opinion, but again, the bulk of people that I talked to were, that was their concern.
Yeah, the, this road diet in Birmingham, and you can Google this one too, is, it was very, very contentious. And every, after we did it, people like said that they just felt more comfortable walking because of traffic, even though it was striped, like it was just farther away from them and it wasn't right next to them when they were walking, so they felt more comfortable walking, their kids biking. And then we were able to implement some of those pedestrian crossings treatments to help increase visibility of pedestrians, whereas before with the four lanes, it was a lot harder and the set speed variability. Because what you end up happening with these four-lane sections is that somebody's, somebody's trying to turn left and then somebody tries to go around them and speed around them or you're trying to pass somebody and you're speeding through town. So that's one of the really good benefits of it is that you can't zoom around people. And I, I'd heard like, oh, people will go in the middle, center turn lane and zoom around me. I have not seen that. That's.
They're having that trouble down in Algonac since they've done it. They're driving in the turn lane.
So with some of the, in regards to some of the Algonac footage that, that came out in regards to this, someone is, there's a video clip now of someone passing on that buffer lane, going all the way to the right and coming around and driving in that section. Our five footers wouldn't be wide enough to fit a car while there's a car in that right lane. And so I, I don't know who would have that particular issue here. But with Mike, your comments and Brian, with your comments, you did raise two more questions for me that I, we haven't actually stated clearly today. You've mentioned that there's a reduction in speeding with this. Does the road diet necessitate a new speed limit on the road?
Usually, so setting, do you want to talk about setting speed limits a little bit?
Sure, I believe it is currently thirty-five?
It's thirty-five presently.
Thank you.
So speed limits are set through a speed study. We've done that, we actually did one in Grand Blank and were able to lower their speed limits by doing a speed study for them. And yes, so if you have your speeds, if you probably went out there right now, it's probably posted at thirty-five, probably people are, the eighty-fifth percentile speed is probably faster with the four lanes. With the low volumes, it's probably, probably closer to forty, forty-five is my guess. If I, if I went out there right now. But what we see with these road diets is, is that yes, it does reduce the speeds and that it's potential that with that reduction in lanes, that you may be able to reduce the speed limit. Now, it really, like I said, if we went out there right now, you would probably have to increase the speeds if we did the speed study right now.
Right now with ours, I've lived off here for forty years and there isn't a whole lot of speed. People pretty much keep in the thirty-five. You can talk to the chief on that. It's, it's not a, it's not a section that people whip through here on to do, because there's a lot of good businesses that everybody stops at, the gas stations and everything else. But there's not a lot of speeding on this thing.
Well, that, that's great to hear because I don't hear that very often.
Perhaps the chief could offer us what type of vehicle accidents are likely to occur or most occur that you're familiar with your experience?
So when I, when I did the analysis, it was thirty. It was funny because the day after, we actually had another crash. The number was actually thirty-one. It was early morning. It was right at the intersection of Ward and Parker. It was dark out. A lady pulled in front of another car. It was just travel and cell phone. Majority of the accidents are failure to yield and failure to stop within assured clear distance, which means a rear-end accident. And when we talk about the right-hand turns, they weren't right-hand turns, they're actually left-hand turns.
The, the rear accidents were left?
Rear accidents were left-hand turns.
Interesting.
Does that?
So a road diet.
Trigger anything in your mind?
So usually, so that's super common is the rear ends. And so the nice, the, with the road diets, you're basically providing space for those left turns to get out of the through lane, because what happens is somebody stopped in the through lane and somebody's not paying attention or somebody's like zooms around it and then the third guy back rams into up because they don't see that the car up there is stopped. So by having the center left turn lane, it allows that turning vehicle a safe space. You know, when I'm in that section and I'm always looking in my rearview to see who's going to, who's going to hit me from behind. So it does create some, a safe space for those vehicles that are turning left to get out of the through traffic to make their turns.
Related to the most recent accident that the chief just mentioned, based on what the MDOT folks had said anyway, it allows, the buffer lane allows five feet of pullout. So if they had had five feet of pullout, perhaps they could have seen the car coming and stopped prior to trying to attempt to get into the lane. Speculative, but that's what they highlighted as a, as a benefit was that the buffer lane allows more visibility to see oncoming traffic.
Man, out of all, all these road diets that you've seen, once they're created, do you find that there's maybe a need for like a traffic control device at certain intersections? Because what, what we're pushing, what I talked to the manager about is that intersection, Ward and Parker, is a problem intersection. And I would do anything to put a traffic light there. Kids coming and going off of that intersection would be a very beneficial. So if we create this road diet and, and it goes through, do you find that when road diets are created, that it creates the need for traffic control devices?
Potentially, yes, because MDOT actually, they won't let us put in a traffic signal unless there's a turn lane. So you have to have somehow put a turn lane in for, it has to have two lanes on all the approaches. So, and you could have a left turn lane and a through lane. They consider that a two-lane approach. But when you put in the traffic signal, because you have to have that, that turn lane. So you're more likely to, to meet the warranting criteria with the volumes, with the traffic signal, especially if you have pedestrians crossing. Schoolchildren, they count extra because children.
That intersection, MDOT has put a light in two times and then removed it, saying it caused more accidents. And I mean, for as long as I've been here, I know a lot of other people know that that light was put in and taken out twice by MDOT at that intersection.
So. I don't work for MDOT.
I know, I know. Yeah, just history.
If I understood what you just said correctly, a road diet would actually increase MDOT's propensity for installing a light in that area.
Right now with the four-lane road, it's hard to install a signal because you've got vehicles that are be stopped in the through lane that then don't have, the, the left turns are offset. So if you're trying to make a left turn and somebody else is trying to make a left turn, you can't see around them. If you have the left turns aligned, they're more likely to approve a design because it, the left turns, you can see around them and it's, it's designed to accommodate a future traffic control device.
I, I just want to caution though that MDOT follows religiously their warrant process. And even, even on eighty-fifth percentile studies, ad nauseam, you can do the study and they will go back out and repeat the same study and come up with a different. I've done this time and time again with MDOT, especially in speed studies and traffic control devices studies. So they make you jump through those hoops and turns of all the other warrants. I would agree with what you're saying in terms of the left turn lanes, but I just didn't want you to think that, that the propensity for MDOT to do something more, you still have to hit every one of those marks. So I didn't want you to think it might be easier or harder because of that.
It is very hard.
It is very difficult. This is a process I want to explain to you.
It is very hard to get a, MDOT to approve traffic signals.
It checks one box. How about that?
If you have a problem with, with your diet, how long does it take you to get rid of them?
To get rid of it, to put the pavement markings back, you can put them back pretty quickly.
But it's a cost.
You just grind them off and it doesn't look great, but that's why, like we did the one in Birmingham where we did the trial. They took the existing and then, so like this picture on the right here, this is when, this is during the trial. So like you can see like they hadn't redone the road yet and they ground off the pavement markings and put them back. This is the finished one on the left.
But we would have to pay for that, correct?
Yes.
And how much does that cost typically?
Well, it depends. I, honestly, I haven't priced it out in years because I don't like to do them. But it would, it would be the cost of grinding off the pavement markings and, and repainting the roadway.
But the roadway is the state roadway, so we'd have to have permission of state in order for us to, if we wanted to fund such a thing.
It would have to go through the state, yes.
But I think they told us they wouldn't reverse it if we put this in, right?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't reverse it.
So you're stuck with it?
Yep.
Well.
I've got, I've got another community that I've been talking to and it's another commissioner. And I'm not going to say the, the city, but, and they hate it now. They got it in, wish they never put it in.
Like I said, it varies by community.
I mean, if there were traffic concerns, higher accidents, MDOT would force your hand? You know, I, I don't know. That makes no sense to me.
I've never done a road diet project that increased the crashes, but if it, if it did, MDOT, it would absolutely red flag for MDOT.
Makes sense.
Yes, it does make sense. Thanks.
This is more of a question for Mike, sorry Julie, but building off of the, the bit earlier that was presented with MDOT since we're speaking about them. They mentioned one of their next stages is like a, a seal and fill to fix cracks and everything that develop over time. That'd be like what they do before a new mill.
Yes, yes.
In that stage, do they re-stripe typically at that point?
Typically, they do not. Would be after that stage. You know, the idea is you try to stay away from a total rebuild as much as possible because that's the most costly when you replace the curbs, gutters and all the infrastructure.
It just strikes me that the next opportunity to change it back, if that's what the community would wish, if we did it and it's not working out, would be when it's being repainted. And that's not clear to me if that's totally when it's being resurfaced completely or if there's a stage before that that could happen.
I, I think, my understanding is it would be a point after the crack and fill. I can address that. I have some other questions that I need to send back to MDOT. I can address that and provide that to the commission if you'd like.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Try to get tight in the timeline in terms of after, what, what would be the next opportunities? Would that be the question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a further question would be the one that I just asked. If they discover a traffic issue, accidents increase.
Well, I would, I would agree with you a hundred percent. That's a red flag. They would automatically do that.
Okay, you know, I mean, just the permanence factor I have a, you know, that's effectively all I wanted to convey. If they notice something that's certainly bad about it, why wouldn't they?
Can you find out the cost maybe?
I can, but understand cost today versus cost.
Correct.
But I, I'll see if I can find out what the cost is in terms of the painting for that section of the road if they'll break that out.
Three quarters of a mile.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
May I ask a question? Can you send me, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mike?
Yes.
Is the MDOT one also being made available to us?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to six, public comment. Anyone's welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name, limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, will follow up as necessary. Please direct your comments towards us up here and myself as the chair.
Phil Lockshack, Marine City, Michigan. I'm here to speak on the road diet tonight. I just want to say upfront as a resident, I'm against doing it. I don't like going through St. Clair. I don't like what they've done there. I liked a lot better when they had the four lanes versus what they've done over there and dieting it down. I'm telling, saying that from experience, driving through there. I am also know on Parker, you got businesses on both sides of the street, both sides of the streets. When you have a center left-hand turn lane, people trying to go left this way, left this way. I see it more of a high density because you do have businesses on both sides of the street. I'm not a fan of striped-off shoulders or shoulders where you can have bikes and people walking right with traffic. We have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Parker's been that way for years. I've never seen a traffic jam on Parker. Traffic flow is really smooth. Emergency vehicles can get around. People can get to the right. Emergency vehicles can go down or if they, they have ways to go around at the same time, people are stuck in the left-hand lane. They just have, I think they have more maneuverability to maneuver and go where they need to go. And that's why I'm looking at the fact of Parker, South Parker works now. If it's not broke, don't fix it. I don't want to take the risk of trying this, then it doesn't work out and then we're fighting with MDOT, having to prove that all the red flags. And then if we can't prove the red flags, it really has to get turned back and the city has to spend money to reverse it. Let's not mess with something that's actually, in my opinion, working now. And I would encourage all citizens, no matter what side you're on, whether you want it or don't want it, to come out, speak, you know, on it, say your opinion. It helps the commission make a better decision and just say what you feel on the issue, but that's my opinion. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public?
Andrew Pecleidinas, seven-one-three West Boulevard. I wrote a speech, a lot of it was statistics and stuff that, that were already covered, so I guess I'll just speak a little bit off the cuff about how I personally feel about the road diet. I, I'm, I'm in favor of the road diet. I think it's a good idea. A lot of the times when I go on walks around town, I end up going on walks pretty late at night just because of the reason of traffic on Parker, you know. I, I live on West Boulevard, so if I want to get down into town either towards St. Clair River or up to go to the gas stations or, or anything, I find it is a little spooky when cars are going by and you're on the sidewalk. I've definitely had times where you're trying to jostle past somebody on the sidewalk. You're getting kind of close to the road. So I end up usually going on walks at night. Or if I have to, I walk up the bike path, which only works if I'm on that side of the road. I've also been unfortunate enough to be in like three different rear-end collisions of exactly the type of scenarios that happen on Parker where, you know, a car will be stopped to make a left turn and somebody will see something and you get, you get rear-ended. So definitely those are things fresh in my mind as far as reasons why. It'd be nice to have a proper left turn lane or a proper shoulder that you can evade into if you need to, you know. More space to pull out, see people coming. I've also been hit on a bicycle by cars, so, and it was another situation just like that. I was crossing, somebody didn't have room to really pull forward and see what was going on, so thankfully it was slow. I didn't get injured, but those are the kind of things that I see that make a road diet seem like it makes a lot of sense to me. I agree that it's not like Parker's a horrific road, so it's not like, there are a million reasons why something has to be done right now, but the fact that we're getting a milling cap is a perfect opportunity to make this happen. So yeah, to me, it just seems like a nice opportunity. Since it's coming, we may as well take advantage of it. Being that the volumes on Parker are so low, I cannot imagine a change really hurting. You know, even if it doesn't help as much as people think that it would or wouldn't, I can't imagine it particularly hurting either. So I don't see, I see a lot of potentials for upside. I don't really see a lot of potentials for downside on that. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, if there's nobody else, then we'll move on to seven for approval of the minutes. Seven A, can I get a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries on to eight for consent agenda. We have the Marine City Area Fire Thirty Run Report, the Departmental Monthly Activity Reports, the business license for Sparkle Hut, the communications for Bell River and Holy Cross Thank You Letters. And can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D as presented?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A through D as presented.
Support.
And roll call vote please.
Fisher Bryson?
Yes.
Fisher Hendrick?
Yes.
Fisher Clausen?
Yes.
Fisher O'Brien?
Yes.
Fisher Rourke?
Yes.
Fisher Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, nine items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Then going on to financial business, 10A expenditures including payroll in the amount of $452,249.71. And I have a motion to approve those expenditures, including payroll, in that amount of $452,249.71.
Make a motion we approve expenditures, including payroll, for $452,249.71.
Support.
Hey, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Fisher Hendrick?
Yes.
Fisher Clausen?
Yes.
Fisher O'Brien?
Yes.
Fisher Rourke?
Yes.
Fisher Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Fisher Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Under 10B, the preliminary financial statements for November of 2024. I have a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements for November 2024 as presented.
So moved, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And to 11 for unfinished business, 11A is ordinance 24-011. That's Commissioner and Mayor compensation, second reading and adoption. I have a motion to approve ordinance 24-011 regarding compensation for Commissioner and Mayor for second reading and adoption.
Make a motion we approve ordinance 24-011 for second reading and adoption.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Hey, roll call vote, please.
Oh, sorry, I, yeah. Uh, I personally still think that the numbers are a bit low. I mean, I, this is not in any terms of greed, we just had a massive bump in inflation. I think that, again, to entice people to serve their city, uh, three and four would be more appropriate numbers. Just my thoughts, but.
Um, oh, I have to say, what you're saying is correct, because I mean, if you can go out in the township, um, one of the townships, uh, trustee gets 5,000 a year.
Right.
So we're still low, but I don't have a problem with it.
Roll call vote, please.
Sorry, ma'am, mayor of Penday. Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Fisher O'Brien?
No.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
No.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, 11B, ordinance 24-013, the zoning map update, second reading and adoption. I have a motion to approve ordinance 24-013 regarding zoning map update, the second reading and adoption.
Make a motion we approve ordinance 24-013 for second reading and adoption.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
On to 11C, 545 Ward Street, WRAP grant approval for F and V Engineering, and I'll open this to the city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I wanted to discuss a little bit with you, the process for applying for grants that we've been utilizing and what we feel will be beneficial, uh, for the city going forward. The application to F and V, uh, is for the, to fulfill the vision and then some for the facility going to be known as the Guy Community Center. The good thing about this, first of all, a couple, uh, notes. This grant deadline is January 30th of 2025, so it's, it's coming up on us quickly. We can use some things that you already pre-approved in terms of, um, uh, the survey and topo was called for in the grant. You'd already proved that for the sale, that's carries over. They waived some additional costs, uh, on this as, as well. The thing that I like about what they've done is the way they set up this grant is we have the opportunity to use it not only for the MDC grant, we can use the same grant package for multiple different grants. So we can apply through, uh, Ralph C. Wilson, we can apply to Beta Bridges, we can apply to the Stevens family. They'll have that whole grant package when, uh, Scott or myself talk about shovel-ready projects. This grant is where the minimum you need to be for a shovel-ready project for somebody to say, "Okay, we're going to award you a grant." You have to have drawings at 60%, you have to have certain, if you will, qualifications pre-met in order to apply. So if you don't meet those standards, when they go to score you, let's say we had to write this in-house and we didn't have those type of things, we're automatically not going to score high enough and it makes it very difficult. You're going to see me bring a number of, of, uh, different grants and in particular after this meeting, uh, in earmarks, federal earmarks and community funding opportunities. I've approached, uh, two Michigan senators and Congresswoman McLean, and we'll, we will be applying for large-scale, um, projects within the city. We've met three or four times, we're putting that together and those will be similar setup where we're talking about maybe not a, a $2 million project, but a $20 million project or a $30 million project. And we're trying to chew off big, more chunks of things. And, uh, these type of grants need to be written by professionals that know how they're scored. The individual that we're utilizing for these processes, we've met with them several times, he worked in Senator Stavino's office, processing the grant requirements to, to send forward, so, uh, I'm confident that they're doing a great job for us. You'll see that in the earmarks and the pro, the projects that we'll bring forward in the same type of manner. There'll be other grants that we can write in-house with some people, or we can specialize on or combine our talents in-house. But grants of this nature, you need that special, uh, you need the, the experience and the people that do this for a living. So that's why I'm recommending the approval of the MEDC grant application process and that it can be used in use for those other grants that I intend to enjoin with it. So if I don't get enough in this one, if I borrow this one or borrow this one, that's the way to go.
Alright, can I have a motion then to authorize F and V Engineering to conceptualize, plan, engineer and apply for a WRAP grant for steps two through four for a cost not to exceed $23,700?
So moved.
Support.
Any further discussion?
Thanks for putting it together.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 12 for a public hearing. For the public hearing, the road diet on South Parker Street between West Boulevard and Chartier. Notice is hereby given that the city commission will conduct a public hearing at 8:01 PM to receive public comments on the road diet on South Parker Street between West Boulevard and Chartier. Is there anybody who'd like to speak?
Rosely Squires, I don't know if they do the same thing, 211, Michigan? I'm kind of coming from this, from a kind of a different angle, um, you know, I live back there, so I don't live like, on this side of town. And my main thing that I, place that I drive is Ward Street, past the high school. Now, coming into things on Parker, or coming home from like, the grocery store, anything like that, I'm turning from, um, Parker down Ward Street. And this has happened to me more than once, but particularly the worst time, just a few weeks ago, where I'm going to make a turn, and here it's 4:30 in the afternoon, and, uh, some activity had let out at the high school. And so I'm turning and this girl's not paying, little girl isn't paying any attention, she's got her hood up and she's looking at her phone, not paying any attention to me, and I, I mean, I would have hit her if I couldn't stop, but the guy behind me had to swerve around me. And I don't know how he'd swerve around me. And we have so much, such a different, out of anything I saw explained on these studies and stuff, we have such a different, um, amount of things on that street. Like we have, the Chinese restaurant, 60% of their business is takeout. The pizza place, it's pretty much, you know, come in, pick up, come and pick up, probably like 99% of their business is that. We've got two banks, all with, you know, drive-through stuff. We have a fire station and a police department that has to have quick exits, and, you know, where are you going to go? I mean, I, because there's supposed to be room, but where are you really going to go? I can't really picture this. It is, and do we want anything from the police or the fires being slowed down? You know, and the people that are on Parker, the business, a lot of the businesses on Parker have been there a long, long time, I mean, a long time. And do we want to do anything that interrupts these businesses that are successful? Because things are shrinking in this town as far as businesses. I know everybody says it's doing so good, and it probably is in some ways, but like, I'll give you an example, I really hate to use this example, but on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, you know, I wanted to have breakfast somewhere and there was nowhere in town to have breakfast. Now, most, yeah, there is two places we can have breakfast, but it so happened that one restaurant closed down for the week, the other restaurant closed down for a couple days, that was Riviera and, um, Riviera and, uh-
Marine City Grill.
The Grill. You know, when I moved here 30 years ago, there were five places I could have breakfast and that didn't include McDonald's. So it's like, I, I eat at the restaurants here on Parker. I mean, I eat at the diner and I eat at the Chinese restaurant probably twice a week and I don't want, and, and, and if anybody comes over and they want to order pizza, we order from Pepe's. It's the best pizza in town, in my opinion. So I, I don't want anything to jeopardize, because we want it to look walkable and pretty and all that, to jeopardize our businesses, because there's less and less places to get takeout orders and things. I mean, there just isn't 30, uh, in 30 years, there's just a lot less places to get things. So I don't want to do anything to jeopardize those, for one thing. I'm very concerned because it's got the fire department on that street and the police department on that street. And for people that like, aren't on this end all the time, they don't see that. You know, we, we do have like apartments that, on King Road, you know, we have, um, housing on King Road, we have a school on King Road, and, you know, like I live in the condos off, on King, off King Road, and we're all, well, a lot of us, I think, are using Ward Street and using Parker. And how's this going to interfere with our everyday life? So I have definite concerns about it. I, I'm, I'm really against it going on, because I think it's going to cause us trouble. And I don't want anything to cause us trouble that we lose any, that it would affect any of our businesses in any way, shape or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else like to speak? Okay, no one else like to speak? We will close the public hearing at 8:06. On to new business, 13A, the South Parker Street Road Diet Discussion, and I'd just like to take a few minutes to recap a few things for everybody. So prior to this meeting, we did have our MDOT public hearing presentation and that presentation is going to be available, um, online on our website. We just had our F and V presentation and that presentation will be available as well. Just had the public hearing. In our packets for this agenda, we had a 137-page handout, uh, full of information, um, that's available to anybody if they want to, to look that up, um, online, or if you want to come into city offices, they can print some of that out for you. Three weeks, we have another public hearing at our January 9th meeting and then we'll vote at that time. We have links on our website, MDOT has links to submit your opinions, your surveys, all your information that you would like to, as well in that, whether you do it through MDOT or while it's us, it will get, the information will get to us on that. So I think that about recaps where we're at right now with the process. So is there anybody else that wanted to make any comments at this time?
I'll start off with one piece, if I may. And it's, it's buried in the packet there, but I, I think it's helpful to understand why we have four lanes, right? And, and why South Parker is in the configuration it is today. And we did some research on this to understand how we came here. Now, it's, for the public's understanding, if you don't know this already, if you haven't gathered it from the current conversation, it is the state's road and, um, it's been that way for, well, since the 50s. M29 did divert down a different route that went over the alternate bridge in town originally in the 50s. And that bridge in the corner there was a problem for the M29 traffic. Keep in mind, at this point, we did not have I-94, so the traffic volumes were much, much higher. South Parker at that time was only two lanes with parking on the side of the road, right? So it was a different configuration. So throughout the 50s, the state is looking at rerouting M29 and they reroute it along South Parker. And that's when they, they chose South Parker because of the opportunity to take away the side parking and turn it into an extra lane to increase the traffic. And then in the 60s and early 70s, we got I-94 finished that diverted much of the traffic. And if you go in the various, uh, Department of Transportation websites and look at the ADT, the average daily traffic and the routing, you can find parts of I-94 now that have like 25,000 daily traffic compared to, you know, the various under 10,000 limits that we have in most of M29 in our area, just on either side of Marine City and within Marine City. So the, the implementation of the four lanes was for a totally different traffic configuration. And it's also not a situation where we'd want to go back to roadside parking because all the businesses now have parking lots, right? It's much better to go into a parking lot and stay there. I think the historical considerations are important. This is Marine City's first time to actually have a say over this road in almost 70 years. And to determine what it needs to look like for our current and future economy and commerce.
Mayor, if I may, I want to make sure that I addressed MDOT and I have, I've got a couple of questions that were sent to me, but I want to make sure. I thought some of those were answered, um, but if they weren't, I've got MDOT cost for printing and striping for three quarters or a mile worth of roadway, a copy of MDOT presentation website, F and V presentation website, we'll make sure both of those happen. Next mill and cap projected to be in how many years? And I'll see if I can pin them down, she wouldn't let me pin her down in terms of crack and seal, I tried there, but I, she kind of averted that. Opportunity to revert to previous striping, if we were to pay for it, would MDOT, uh, consider that on our dime? Was there any other questions you want to direct it back to MDOT?
Did you have the, if, you know, accidents increase-
Oh, okay.
You know, accidents increase, you know? Are there some noted issue, you know, would they revert or would they force us to keep it?
So I will tell you that, uh, the UD10s are, are structured in such a manner that all that information is downloaded and sent to MDOT engineers and all kinds of different people that analyze that, and they would immediately be able to see there's a dramatic impact. In our case, with 30 accidents over five years, I don't know what type of level that would need be able to catch their eye. It would something probably, we'd have to say, "Hey, look, we've noticed a significant jump." Where they're seeing a lot of accidents these days are roundabouts. They're saying, "Hey, that's the new, uh, accident causer," if you will, and they blame that on education of the driver. So, you know, I could, I'll ask that question, but generally, in my experience, we kind of get a canned answer from them. We can't really tell you that, we, you know, we monitor this and that and this and that, but the community brings this to attention, they, they, then we'll study it, the commission will study it, is what they do.
Okay.
Did they ever give us any, uh, timeline if you didn't want it to get rid of it? I think they kind of said that you can get rid of it. 10, 15 years?
Uh, I'm not sure that that's what they said, but I will ask it in the questions in terms of, uh, the next mill and cap. They told us it was permanent, which I understand they don't want to tear up a new roadway. I, I got the impression, unless the impression I have is wrong, that, uh, it would be considered beyond the, uh, the, uh, crack filling phase or- beyond the crack filling phase, or the next time they'd have to grind the striping or repaint striping, and, you know.
Part of this, as I understand, the presentations, the various studies and data that we got, is there isn't really an increase in traffic accidents after a road diet goes in. And so MDOT sees no reason to revert back. And they haven't had a community demanding it that, from Linda's earlier presentation. And Julie's twenty-five years, she hasn't been involved in it. It seems to be a very rare occurrence, which is why I think they're like, it don't, it doesn't happen. And getting a little bit more clear-cut data on that could probably be helpful for the community.
Okay.
One of the things I know...
I would agree with that assessment.
Yeah, one of the things Linda and Julie seem to make it clear is, there's a lot of anxiety and fears in communities before they go in, after they go in, that tends to die down, and they don't often get asked to revert back, which I think we need to get some concrete evidence about what happens in the rare cases when people do want it to be reverted back.
I'd like to know why the places seemingly don't want to have revert back, is it because of the cost of doing it, which could be a big factor in why they don't revert, right? We'd have to pay for it.
And I do know, if you look at other states, I mean, each one of these things has to be taken individually, but I do know of one state, I did some research on, they had six that they're reverting back because they were just total failures. But I think it all depends on each situation. So, but I would just encourage everyone, since there will be a link on our site for a form where you can put in your two cents for or against, I would just ask everybody to go out and use that and speak your piece. That's the best way to do it.
So, Mike, is it possible for us to get F and V to do one of the study or assessments that they were mentioning about within, I mean, I don't, it doesn't seem like we have enough time.
It would be tough, because I'd have to bring it back to you based on the current purchasing policy. I couldn't, don't have enough wiggle room to initiate the cost. I'm sure the cost would be over, the cost for the presentation was under the amount, so I could approve that, but purchasing policy ties my hands in terms of getting that done in a manner that would meet the council's needs.
Yeah, I'd want to know how much that study would cost first.
You're also fighting the holidays.
Right, yeah, that's, and I, I kind of was asking her, how long could you get us a study? And I think she gave us a very average time, not a holiday season.
Well, she was going to be a little bit beyond, but I'll be honest with you, there's not a lot in our studies. Very low traffic accidents, the density of the traffic's under five thousand.
Right.
There's not a whole lot there in terms of what, I mean, based on criteria for a road diet, that section of the road meets the criteria in terms of that things. It's a, it really boils down to the community's acceptance or denial, or want, what the community wants, but based upon the traffic studies and engineering studies, it fits within their parameters, if you, does that make sense? So I, we could pay for a study like that, but...
We know what...
They already tell you what you already know what, you know. We had an unusual amount of traffics or different other things that we could say, hey, this needs a study, because this is a factor that changes the parameters of that. I don't think that's present here, unless I'm missing something.
And when MDOT did their presentation, she also said that she's not pushing this. They weren't pushing for the road diet.
No. They weren't advocating one way or the other.
It's just an option that was available to us because of the work that they're gonna be doing anyway, so.
Yeah, and that's why I mentioned, this is our first time to actually make a decision over this road, right? This is, for the last seventy years, MDOT has not always offered this sort of authority to a community over a road that they ostensibly have control of. That policy that they have that lets communities make these decisions has not been permanently there, and that could always change in the future as well. But it's an opportunity we have that we don't normally have historically.
And I just urge the public to please do your own research, educate yourself on the pros and cons, and the myths also. There are a lot of incidents that road diets aid in preventing, a type of traffic incidents that they aid in preventing, so do your research, come with an informed decision, and most of all, give us feedback.
Okay.
And thanks, Mike, for setting all of that up.
Yeah, no problem.
And Scott?
All right, we'll move on to thirteen B, computer hardware upgrade purchase. And I'll give that to the city manager to update us on that.
If you look in your packet, you'll see a couple of documents. One's a hardware lifecycle report dated November of twenty twenty-four. It shows equipment that we have that currently, actions required on in terms of taking care of workstations and other machines that we have a significant issue with. These include, but are not limited to, the inability to run new programs, inability to take software updates, inability to take security upgrades. They leave a hole in our, our system, if you will. I thought about trying to cut these in half in terms of doing a few critical ones now and try to limp along until the fiscal year. And then just doing some research and reading what may happen going forward in terms of tariffs on equipment and things, and one of the things they project that may increase would be the cost of obtaining these type of things. I had Jason and I talk to our dealers and also checked with a local supplier that we utilize, and they would not give long-term commitments in terms of cost going forward, so I thought it was more cost-efficient to buy what we need now. Another reason I hate to buy eleven at one time is because eventually eleven at one time have to go out, but we'll find a way now to pass them into less critical roles, maybe utilize some for training, so we can keep them there and spread the wealth, if you will. But this is along with the same IT upgrade that I've been kind of committed to in terms of things that we've been approaching, trying to get us more efficient with the use of our IT capabilities. So I'm asking the commission to approve the purchase of the additional equipment that's spec'd out here not to exceed the amount listed.
I'll make a motion that we approve the update purchase of the computers from High Tech not to exceed ten thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars.
Support?
Any other discussion?
Just to let the public know, support for Windows ten ceases in, I think it's October of twenty-five, like, that they absolutely stopped security support for it. Sadly, Microsoft made the decision to make sure that certain hardware also wasn't supported based on some, I'd argue, rather arbitrary things. So anyway, this is an issue that I think a lot of municipalities are gonna have. You personally should also look at your PC and make sure that it may be updatable to Windows eleven from a security standpoint. So just again, to let you know, this is not a, you know, this is a necessary thing that for the future cybersecurity of the city, we really need to do.
Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to thirteen C regarding the community property rental agreement and fee schedule. And so we have two items under here. We have the agreement, and then later we have the fee schedule. And I'll turn to city manager.
So I wanted to go back over the community property rental agreement. We did make a couple modifications, because when we looked at what was asked of us previously, and I think Commissioner Bryson, you had just directed me in terms of a policy, in terms of use of city facilities for rental and those type things. I found the way to probably do that was include it in the rental agreement and list the things right in the agreement, the permitted uses and limitations and expectations, so when they sign the agreement, it's included, it has the policy information right then and there. So as an example, you know, they need prior permission regards to alcohol, occupancy levels, community standards clause, those type of things were pretty much generic to all city facilities. So what we did is we amended the user agreement to include those, and in addition, this will be online and available on the website, so they'll be able to see this as they, as they complete the agenda form. Everything will be on there, and there'll be areas that they'll have to check in order for compliance. So as an example, they'll check which building they want to use, and if you go through there, you'll see the highlighted areas that were changed or added, if you will. Jason, I don't have that on mine, so if you want to go over them, please.
Yeah, if I can read that. Under section five, permitted use and limitations, we added the clause for no smoking or use of tobacco or other substances of any kind, and no sale of goods or services without the prior written approval of the owner for that section. You will also notice too, I believe it was previously section seven in what was on, or in the agenda packet with a security deposit, we eliminated that. The security deposits, after internal discussions between myself, city manager Reeves, treasurer Posey, or financial nightmare, in trying to make this form, you know, consistent through all of our properties, it doesn't make sense to have one caveat in there for one of our properties to require a security deposit, and that only one right now is the bandstand. And you see in here as well that there is a cleaning or damage fee in section six, right at the bottom there, that a cleaning fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars will be assessed, deemed necessary by the owner for excessive wear and or damage by the user, which would apply to any of the city-owned properties that are available for rental. And then now, I believe it is in the new number seven, we also added responsibilities of the user. The user shall ensure that the activities in the rental hall are consistent with the stated purposes of the rental, and the user shall ensure and comply with the allowed time limits for the event to occur. Number eight, we kind of elaborated a little bit on our cancellation refund policy, again, after a few internal discussions, kind of what made more sense in comparing it across with some other municipalities and their own properties. Cancellations prior to thirty days of the rental date will result in a full one-hundred percent refund, and cancellations made within the thirty-day period of the intended rental date will not be subject to a refund, and also a initial space there for the reservation.
Now, one, one thing that was brought to our attention in a meeting today was kind of like a force majeure, act of God, the weather cancelization. We had a significant blizzard. As a city manager, I would take the opportunity then to take administrative review and either transfer their thing to another day or authorize a refund based upon that weather event or loss of power or something of that nature. So, but in terms of, we wouldn't have the ability nine times that attend to re-rent that facility. What we want to prevent, though, is people, January one, going on there and renting the pavilions, or in the bandstand, renting all the beach stuff, getting all the prime dates, and then a week before, it looks like it's gonna rain, oh, we're canceling, we're canceling, we're canceling. And then we didn't have the ability to have a host or wedding or an outdoor reception or anything else. So that's the reason why we ended up with that cancellation policy, is we looked around, that's pretty standard. But, Jason.
Next, under the owner's rights and responsibilities, we added the owner shall ensure that the user's event aligns with the community's value. And this last line here in the insurance and liability section, the city manager may, based on circumstances and good cause presented, waive all or part of the insurance requirement of the user in that instance. I believe that was everything.
So that's what we amended.
Jason, a couple of quick questions. For the, one of the last items you showed, I think it was under number nine, the community's value, do you mean community's values, as in like what we believe in or stand for, or is it a financial value?
Yes.
Should be an S.
Yes, there should be an S.
Okay, thank you. I'm not trying to catch you on your spelling.
No, no.
Making sure I understand here, and then, and this is in the prior version of the document as well, under five, the alcohol item. Receive prior permission from the owner, and that's us, in regards to alcohol on premises, and that the user shall provide a general liability insurance coverage for the event. BYOB, bring your own beer will not be permitted. Is this then that the owner is providing the alcohol for the entire event, or is this, they're supposed to get alcohol from us? I don't understand.
No, no. So, so the user, because we would be the owner, the user would supply their own with that general liability insurance. We, we kind of went out and speaking with city attorney Davis, almost the same thing. It doesn't increase the liability on us if they're providing that extra insurance. And we looked at different, even outside of municipal-owned rental halls, that's, it's common, it's standard, that they provide an additional...
So their guests cannot bring their own alcohol?
Correct. They, the actual renter or the user would have to provide it. I mean, if you look at aspects of graduation parties...
Yeah.
Or weddings, you know, that, the user who is rented on there that has the insurance policy would be the one providing it.
That makes sense.
Yes.
And the Lions Club has done this for years because it was such a big liability issue. When I was in there, we talked to the insurance company, and we started doing this. Some people balked at it, but they can get it fairly cheap on their own policy, but it's the safety of us and them...
Oh, yeah.
To have the insurance in the event of alcohol.
I didn't want to out anybody, but for the events I've been there for, they've had alcohol, and I wasn't like, were we prohibiting that?
No, she always made sure that they had to check a box, and they had to provide proof before they could even have their event.
That makes sense. Thank you.
I would be the last anti-alcohol person, just, just, I would never suggest that, yeah, that wouldn't come from me.
And we'd save a copy of the person's insurance that they got, and then kept it with the record of the rental in case something came up down the road. We'd have that.
So I read this in its entirety, loved all the additions. The only thing, after hearing Jason read it out loud, I'm noticing on seven, fourth bullet point, because this encompasses all of our rental facilities, could we change hall to facility or space? Would that just make more sense, given that this is a catch-all form?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay, thank you. So it'd be that, hall, space, whatever you want, facility, space, whatever makes, again, sense for catch-all, and then nine, second bullet point, add an S to value.
Can I have a motion then to approve the community?
Can I just ask something? On the non-smoking part of there, can you go back up to that, was it five or something? So, what about vaping?
Same thing.
That that's included in that?
That is included in that.
Okay, but it might be something that you might want to make clear, because a lot of people don't think it applies, and I'm glad you put other substances, because I've seen, like, hotels and stuff where I've been, well, we weren't smoking cigarettes, you know, so, use of tobacco or other substances.
Well, then we get into hookah parties and other, I don't, you may not have that problem up here, but in my area, that's a lot of those type things.
Yeah, so other substances applies there, so that's good. Okay, thanks.
Absolutely. I have a motion to approve the community property rental agreement as amended.
So more support?
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And now for the five forty-five Ward Street rental fee schedule.
Thank you, mayor. We had to kind of get this back to you right away, because we've already been in contact with a number of people that are ready to rent and reserve the Guy Community Center, and we've met, today we met with the Masons and the Eastern Star Group, and we've got more meetings scheduled, and they're all wondering, okay, we want to rent, but what's the fee gonna be? And some of them want to know before they, obviously before they reserve, and we only thought that was fair. So we did a lot of research on this, and if you look on the box that Jason made, the current fees are what the Lions Club was charging, and I think the mayor or Lisa can comment on those. In terms of my understanding, they hadn't been raised in over five years from those fees. And then what we're proposing, so as an example, today we met with the Masons, they're gonna the Masons, they're going to have from 10 to 12 meetings, so let's say 12 meetings a year, plus maybe a couple uses of the full hall. So for the clubroom area where they, we would allow them to rent, it would be $65 a meeting. And then for the full hall, they would pay $225 for that. They've been paying $85 a meeting because they thought that they were paying too low to the Lions Club.
Yes.
So they were donating extra $15. So they're happy with the, the cut to 65 and actually moving from the rental hall into the clubroom. They, they were very pleased with that. Weekly community events were being charged $30. We've increased that. We think that's $50, and I'll defer to Jason on that. He's one of the groups that utilize the facility in terms of athletics and those type of things. And do you have any question or comment on that or want to offer information?
Well, I'm meeting with Terry too. I know the football team has used that for a number of years. And it's nine weeks in the fall on Thursdays with it. And the Lions Club was gracious during the playoffs to just donate that, that fee as well. I don't think it's a large increase, but we still want to make that available to the football team as well to use it.
Then if you look for the hall rental, it was 175 plus security deposit. We've done away with the security deposit, raised it to 225. That's still the lowest in the area. The community hall and the outdoor pavilion, once that's taken care of and back in order, that'll be $400. And then for funerals, we arranged a, a three or four hour minimum of 115. And then if we had to add the cleaning surcharge, it'd be at 125. We think these are very reasonable. Obviously, in the future, we'll bring those back. We'll include them in a fee schedule. But in order for us to process tomorrow and get moving on these, we needed action of your input. So we can say, okay, folks, is there, they want to go on our website and they want to start reserving. And there's a bunch of people that want to do that. So we're trying to hold them off. We have to input some of this manually to get started, but this is, we can't do anything until we get this piece done. And you're going to say, well, why do we increase it? Very candidly, I'll just, it'll be coming back to you in January, to replace the flooring, to remove the shuffleboard. The bids, the lowest bids are in the 13,000. The higher bids are close to 18,000. That's just to replace the flooring. And of course, you need paint and a couple of other things. And, you know, $20,000 for cameras and alarms and door pads and that. So it adds up. Obviously, this is a community-type building and we want to make it hospitable and bring it up to standards, but you can't continue to rent it at $50 a session or something like that. It just won't sustain itself.
One of the questions I have, do you have a, a list like she used to have as far as what they have to do to make sure the hall is in?
We will have that, yes.
Cleanup list and stuff?
Yes, there was a whole list.
Nice checklist, yeah.
And if it wasn't done, then, you know.
So my only concern with this is if you're renting out a portion of this, you're kind of renting all of it out. It, it doesn't seem like we could do the rental hall and someone else get the Lions Club Pavilion outdoors and have two concurrent events and, you know. So I'm always nervous when I see fee schedules of this of like, well, how do you know this group is only using the clubroom and isn't in the rest of the hall? And how?
I'm glad you asked that question.
And I'm sure you all have spoken about it. And so my question was going to be, can you illuminate this a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
How are we getting away with this?
Part of the access control system and the new camera system we'll put in, we'll be able to tell exactly what parts of the hall they have. And with the, so a group will get a punch code instead of handing out keys and everybody in the community's got a key to the building. Your group will get a punch code and that you'll enter. And by our phones, we'll be able to tell who goes in and out of the building, the time the alarm set, or the time we can set the alarm, the time they leave. All that stuff will be done, remote control. In addition, we'll have it set up so people can enter in and go utilize, like we could have a historical district meeting in the clubroom there, if this room was busy or we're having elections. And it, and we could still rent out the hall for a feature because you can enter by a different door with a different code. So I can utilize both. And once they get the vision up, we'll have outdoor restrooms. We could rent the pavilion because there'd no be, no need to go inside the building. And they could use that facility because there's electric and stuff out there. You know, I'm trying to think ahead in terms of how can we multi-use the building. One of the events we want to host is a campout for Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts to pitch tents on the property and then utilize. So we're doing a couple of things where we can use the property setting outside, part of the building inside, and perhaps the rental hall. So I, I think you'll find that we're going to get a little creative in terms of, just a hint for some things that are common, so farmer's market, multiple craft shows, those are already, we're already in discussion on all those.
Great. Thank you for the forethought.
If I may too, Commissioner, I, I think, you know, in our conversations too, kind of this back and forth, hurrying to get this all in place, I, I don't think it's our desire right at this moment to actually rent out that clubroom. So that $65 fee you see is for those social organizations that have been established there, you know, for a number of years. So that was kind of to keep them there and not say, hey, we own it now, go away. And that's not our intentions. So I think that fee kind of separates it. And they understand where their, you know, their rental is. And I don't think at this time that would be open and available to the public.
Public, yeah.
For, for reservation that portion.
More so for city use, I guess, in terms as we move forward there.
Are there two, sorry, are there two sets of bathrooms then for each, or a conjoined thing where?
Yeah, there's ADA accessibles for the hall rental, then there's also a bathroom inside the clubroom.
Perfect. And you answered my question about the pavilion because it needs bathrooms to be able to be rented. Thank you. Great work.
All right, none of that. Can I have a motion to approve the 545 Ward Street rental fee schedule as presented?
So moved. Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Out of fourteen administrative reports, we have, A, the city attorney's report.
I'm all good. Thank you very much. We're making progress on the purchase agreement process for your new community center. We've prepared a document and I'm working with the other side on that. And things are moving along very well. A lot of the policies that we talked about in our new charter provision are in pretty good shape into the city offices from my office. We're fine-tuning those and those will be before you shortly.
Okay, thank you very much. And city manager's report.
I sent you a report earlier this afternoon. I want to add just two things. Scott's prepared a construction update that'll go on our website. It will get sent to everybody, but it says, City of Marine City Safe Drinking Water Project Construction Update. The first phase of the safe drinking water project is scheduled to begin January 6, 2025 with equipment mobilization. So you'll start to see construction equipment move into the city. Work in the following streets should begin on January 7, 2025, weather permitting. South Third Street, Cottrell Street, Bell Street, North Parker Street, Hill Street, West Boulevard, east of M-29, South Bell River, Eldred to Chartier, and Elder Street are the first streets scheduled. Initial work to be conducted to remove a portion of the paved street service to prepare for underground water main replacement. All removed areas will be backfilled with gravel until the street is replaced in the late spring. In some cases, that might be a better choice than what they have now. The first water main project replacement work along South Third Street from Chartier to Ward Street should begin shortly after pavement removal. If you experience any unusual construction issues or have questions regarding the project, please contact the city by calling 810-643-1018. And this will be posted and we'll start getting this out. It'll be on Facebook. And as we promised, that project's going to kick off and that'll last two years as we work through this project. And I think that's all I have. I have more for you in a little bit.
Thank you. And now reports from department heads. We do have several in attendance this evening. Fire chiefs, thanks, sir. Please, chief.
I'm all set as well.
Okay, thank you. All right. Clerk Bub?
A few items. None of them involve elections, so I promise that. A couple vacancies to announce on boards. We do have one vacancy on the pension board of trustees and the retiree healthcare pension board. It's the same position for the citizen at large. Must be a resident of Marine City, and you cannot be a relation to a current pensioner or a current employee who is part of the pension program, which there's only two left. So those are the stipulations for that. We also have one vacancy on the zoning board of appeals. Those applications will be due by January 15 at 4:00 p.m. for a consideration of appointments for the city commission at the January 23 meeting for those. The ZBA is not going to meet in January, but the pension board does meet at the end of January. So it would be nice to have that in place before that, that board meets there. And then I just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, now on to Commissioner Privileg and liaison reports. And we'll start with Commissioner Clausen.
Well, the planning commission approved the concept for the apartments down there on, down by the plaza. So, and the Hungry Howies was approved for what they're doing, moving to a new building. So that was taken care of. And I just want to wish everybody a good holiday and be careful and don't overwork yourself if we get this snow. Thank you.
Commissioner Bryson.
Just, everyone, I'm sure, just wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Commissioner O'Brien.
I've been on this board now for a little over a year. I kind of joined in at an awkward time. And I just want to thank you all for making this year quite enjoyable. And we've done a lot of good work together. And, you know, here's to the next one. Happy holidays to everyone in our city here. We do, we are getting to that snow period, right? And so we do have an ordinance in place for snowstorms to get your vehicles off the road during business hours, more or less. See the web, city website for more on that. But please help our DPW workers out on getting the roads cleared in a timely manner. Other than that, thank you and Happy New Year.
Commissioner Ross.
Just thanks to the staff and city manager for all the work in putting everything together. Thanks to MDOT for coming. Thanks to F&amp;B. Thanks for all the hard work on the safe drinking water projects. This is a very exciting time for Marine City. We have a lot of projects going through. There will be dust. Please be patient, but a lot of great things coming to this city. And appreciate all the work.
Thank you. Commissioner Rourke.
I just want to say happy holidays to everyone and stay safe out there and try to stay warm. Thanks.
Commissioner Hendrick.
All right, sorry, it's going to be a long one. It's because the Old Newsboys. So we're at the end of the year. We've given everything out. We did a good year, but I, there's, I got a lot of thank yous. So as the Old Newsboys president, I'd like to thank all the people and businesses who donated money and toys to the Old Newsboys every year. We made our goal this year. We could not make this happen without all of you. It's comforting to know how much everyone cares to help the local children. Some of the businesses, Ericsson's, Delude Construction, Ten Years, Warswick Tools, St. Martin's Church, Nickel and Saft, just to name a few. Mike Horn for putting the paper together that we put out each year. It always shows the town's rich ship history. All the volunteers who stand in the street to distribute the papers, and all the ladies who provide us with soup and chili and donuts to keep us going. Andrea and Arthur Schenk for the Christmas parade. They get all the floats registered, lined up, and also provide the music and lights for Santa. They give free hot chocolate and cookies to everybody. This was the best parade ever. Also, thank you to our members who put up their float together, all the walkers for the float, and the people who helped Andrea coordinate the lineup. Debbie Owens for getting the candy for the parade and the bags to hand out for all the kids. Alicia and Mike Nolan for putting out the toy boxes, collecting, sorting the toys, and getting them ready to distribute at the fire hall. Takes a lot of work and space to collect all the items. All the businesses who have a toy box, Corner Grocery, Dry Dock, Fifth Third Bank, Lumberjack, Marine City Grill, Marine City Offices, Metalodge in St. Clair, Tim's Party Store, Tractor Supply, VGs, and General Dollar. I want to thank Candy Cadena and Dawn Camel for coordinating the big craft show, the Perch Point Conservation Club for letting us use the space for the show, and all the people who donate raffle items. This is a huge job, and everyone from the Old Newsboys helps us set up and sell tickets before and during the show, and all the crafters who rent space for our cause. George Bukowski for helping me distribute and collect the money boxes and all the businesses who allow us to put them in their stores. CVS, Bayside Tamming, Tim's Party Store, Gords, Anita's, Gahr's, Newport Pub, Hills Garage, Dry Dock, The Grill, and Ten Years. Mary Kay Bukowski because she always makes us a beautiful quilt every year that we raffle off. Kim Ruttinger, she keeps all our finances in order, which is a huge job. Debbie Owens also sends out all our thank yous. Kim Ruttinger, Norma McConnell, and Andrew Schenk for collecting all the information for the families with the children that we supply the toys, candy, and vouchers to, and setting up for voucher days. 26 Mile Road Myers for handling all the vouchers and working with us to make this happen. The City of Marine City staff stored a huge amount of toys that a local couple donated to us. The DPW for the cones during the paper sales and setting up for the parade. The Marine City Fire Authority for allowing us to use the building for all of our meetings and when we give out the toys and vouchers. The Police Department for all the support keeping the parade safe and giving us $300 from their No Shave November. And the city manager for getting us a portage on this year that really helped us out. Every two years, we install a new president. For the last two years, I've had the honor of being the president to the best group of volunteers a person could ask for. It's very difficult for groups to get volunteers except for the Old Newsboys. It takes a lot to make all this happen for the children in our area. And I apologize if I've missed anyone. So many people are involved to make this a success. So thank you, everyone who has helped us provide Christmas to 256 kids. That's 115 families to a tune about $41,000. So we do this every year. And I'll tell you, we can't thank everybody around here enough for making this happen every year for the kids. So with that, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you all the Newsboys for that. And I'd just like to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and have a safe and Happy New Year. And with that, now we'll enter into closed session. The city commission will enter into closed session and consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, reference the state of Michigan correspondence stated December 9, 2024, under 15.268H. We'll move closed session in the conference room. If anybody'd like to stay, and we'll return once closed session is completed, and we'll enter back into open session. You're more than welcome to stay in the building in this area until the closed session is over. There may or may not be action taken upon returning to open session. And with that, I need a motion to enter into closed session.
Motion entered in closed session.
Support.
A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.